That might be a good question once Mr. Hader is able to join us.
Okay, thank you.
I'll leave you here until he comes on and then, once you ask your question, then I'll move you back over.
Great, thank you.
Actually, the answer to that is you can, but you do that when it's open to the public.
That's what I was thinking, Dennis, would be, just saying, when we open it up to the public is when you could ask any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Who are we waiting on? We're waiting on Matt?
That is correct.
Well, he's a pretty important person, so. Your water's clear, Andrew, when you drink, like sees through, yeah.
Super hot. Oh, sorry, Matt said he's trying to connect, he's having some difficulty.
You would think Matt would be the master at Zoom now.
Hey Jonathan, are you guys working back in the office yet, or are you still remote?
No, we're pretty much in the offices. I mean, our construction sites have to continue on, so we're doing some rotating schedules, though, for some of our salaried staff. So our office isn't as busy. Craft, we're trying to stagger a little bit as well, and doing temperature checks as they come in, but we're not really getting the reprieve on any type of deliverables or anything, so we're kind of onward and upward.
The banks aren't too happy about it.
No, yeah, it's definitely a lot of new protocols and stuff that we're putting in place. Hey, Matt?
Hi there, my apologies, I've been having some tough technical difficulty on this end.
Yeah, I thought you, yeah, I thought you would be the master at Zoom by now.
You know, they just gave me a license.
So you're official, huh?
Now I'm official.
Are we, uh, are we ready to start?
Yeah, the only thing I'm, I'm oh yes, I am, I'm, my apologies.
Mr. Douglas, did you want to ask your question real quick before we get started?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Hader.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, hey, I had a question, um, I was telling the group there, I've been on a lot of boards and commissions, and as an alternate, I was able to ask questions as the meeting proceeded. But what are the, what's the protocol here in this?
Only the seated members for this evening's meeting will be, will, are be permitted to ask questions.
Okay, and what about when, when it's, uh, open to the public?
Anybody can ask questions at that time. Yeah, I mean, we have, we have standards for, and policies for electronic meetings, so as long as people have registered for, or, you know, to ask a question, then we'll go through that. Tricia, I don't know if you're calling that, or if Alex or somebody else is going through that list. But those people that pre-registered or signed up will be allowed to ask questions during a, during a public hearing.
Is that the same for myself? Should I have signed up beforehand?
Yes, yes, sir.
I, I would say that you did sign up because you're here. But we have to move you over to an attendee, so I think that's a, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to roll?
Sure, can you, can you resend me the agenda? Never mind.
Did you find it, or?
Yeah, I'm good.
Send it to you, Matt. We will call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Alexa, can you please perform a roll call?
Yes. Cameron Popio.
Present.
Vice Chairman Amador.
Present.
Commissioner Kamak.
Present.
Commissioner Ingram.
Present.
Commissioner, yes.
To unmute David. He's still muted.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Welcome to the commissioners, would also like to introduce members of staff present with us today. We have Jason Rogers, Community Development Director, Steve Tims, Planning Manager, Jenny Axmecker, Principal Planner, Matt Hader, Deputy City Attorney, Tricia Mason, Community Development Manager, Alexa Ulam, Administrative Specialist. Thank you also for joining us today. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
So.
Second?
Second.
Alexa, can you please call for a vote for the approval of the minutes?
Yes, Commissioner Yost.
I wasn't an attendee at the last, I was an attendee at the last commissioners' meeting. So don't take that vote on it.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ingram?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamak?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Amador?
Yes.
And Chairman Popio?
Yes. The motion has passed for yeses and one abstaining for the motion to the approval minutes. Will the city please introduce the first case?
Sure, the first case this evening is case number twenty dash four six nine, DIA Tech Center L C is requesting a third amendment to the DIA Tech Center Plan Unit Development P U D Zone Document to allow the deviation of setback and floor area ratio standards to be considered through the minor modification process. The DIA Tech Center P U D Zone Document generally applies to the properties located south of East Eighty-Fourth Avenue, west of Tower Road, north of East Eighty-First Avenue, and east of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. Presenting the case this evening on behalf of the city, I believe that is the Mr. Tims, no, this is Ms. Oxmiker's case.
No worries. Ms. Mason, if you'll allow me to share my screen, I will start the presentation. All right. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission, the case before you is Z eight nine six. It is a third amendment to the DIA Tech Center P U D Zone Document, which is generally located the property, the south of East Eighty-Fourth Avenue, west of Tower Road, north of East Eighty-First Avenue, and east of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. Next slide, please. If you can see, the property is located to the west of Tower Road and to the north of USA Airport Parking in unincorporated Adams County and to the west of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. Most of the surrounding area is zoned P U D. There's the Nexus North P U D to the north and west, the Second Creek Farms P U D to the north, and the Republic Waste Services P U D to the north and east. Next slide, please. The comprehensive plan designates a majority of this property for DIA technology uses with commercial uses along Tower Road. Next slide, please. You can take a look at the aerial of the site, you can see some of it is currently developed. We have the McLean Distribution Warehouse Center in the southwest corner of the development, next to the USA Airport Parking. We have a distribution facility to the north of it. We have a seven eleven on the corner of Eighty-First Avenue and Tower Road. And then we have a airport parking facility just to the west of it. Next slide, please. So the case history for the DIA Tech Center P U D Development, it was annexed and zoned back in 2011. There was a vesting case in 2012, and then additional property was added to the P U D in 2016 and 2017. Next slide, please. The request tonight is to amend the P U D Zone Document to allow for the deviation of setback and floor area ratio standards to be considered through the minor modification process. Next slide, please. So as part of this request, there are only minor updates to Sheet One of the P U D Zone Document, just for updated signatures. There are no changes to Sheets Two and Three. There is a note referencing the ability to vary F A R on Sheet Four. There are no changes proposed to Sheet Five, which is the land use schedule. And then on Sheet Six, the majority of the amendment occurs in the added note fifteen. Next slide, please. So what does note fifteen on Sheet Six say? It says that the community development director may approve deviations to the setback and floor area ratio requirements within this P U D Zone Document. The minor modification must come with, along with a P U D development permit, it cannot be submitted absent of this document showing the site plan, landscape plan, and building elevations for proposed development. And a minor modification is not permitted unless one of the following benefits to enhance the development also exist. Next slide, please. So these proposed enhancements, there's three different options, you can include the installation of an employee amenity area, such as a gazebo that has a minimum square footage associated, you can enhance the landscaping, providing additional living plant material coverage or additional landscaped area. You can also add public art as part of that enhancement. And then you can use building materials that are above and beyond what is generally required with the design standards within this P U D Zone District and include additional massing or glazing within the development. So these are the additional compensatory benefits that are required as part of this consideration of the minor modification. Next slide, please. So here's a concrete example of one of the projects that would benefit from this proposed P U D amendment. This is a development plan, P U D permit, that's been submitted for DIA Tech Center filing eight lot one, it is currently under administrative review. It does not meet the minimum front setback required within the P U D Zone Document, which is seventy-five feet. I believe they're currently at about a hundred and sixty-six feet for the, the maximum setback. So this project is, I can't tell you the name of it, but it's a Fortune five hundred upper echelon company that's looking to develop within Commerce City, and so without this potential amendment, this project would probably go away. Part of the reason that they cannot meet the required setback is they have a trucking use that requires a very programmed and thoughtful layout for the truck transportation to not commingle with the employee cars and to access all the loading docks within the proposed development. And it can't be altered to meet that current setback requirement. So as part of this P U D amendment, the community development director would be able to consider a minor modification to this maximum front setback greater than the twenty percent minor modification that's currently allowed in the code to potentially find this proposed development in compliance with that. So next slide, please. So it's important to note, this proposed amendment doesn't change any of the approved uses, it doesn't change any of the design standards for the project. The minor modification still requires the approval of the community development director, and approval of a minor modification is not guaranteed. Next slide, please. The required public notification for this case was met, we mailed postcards to adjacent property owners, the notice was published in the Denver Post, and three signs were posted on the site. Next slide, please. As of this date, staff has received no requests for additional information. Next slide, please. The D R T recommends that the Planning Commission vote to forward this request to City Council with a favorable recommendation. Next slide, please. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the, that you may have at this time, a wall is available to answer any questions as well, they are not providing a presentation, slide presentation tonight, but they would like to speak to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Questions from the commissioners for the city?
I have a, a quick question, Jenny. You know how many jobs are involved once this project has been completed and it's fully employed?
I believe that specific project has between three hundred and four hundred jobs.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Would the applicant please like to speak?
Tricia, if you can please let Paul Thurston speak.
Yes, yeah, online, Tricia?
Sorry, I was on mute, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, my name is Paul Thurston, I'm with Becknell Industrial. I don't have much of a presentation other than what Jenny was able to put together, but I wanted to be present and answer any questions you may have about this project or desire to amend the P U D.
Questions for the applicant from commissioners?
As of now, are there any, I mean, it looks like we've all, we've got old distribution in there. Are there any plans for other types of businesses or commercial or or is this, or is what we have pretty much industrial?
I, I wouldn't really classify this so much as, I mean, technically it's distribution, but there's quite a bit of robots and quite a few employees involved in this, so I, I think it's, you know, you could argue it's even I mean, it's, it's, it's a pretty unique building with pretty unique use, but it, I would not categorize it as a, like a pure distribution building. I will say that the, to the north of this building were approved and under, under plans, plans are being designed for a three hundred and thirty thousand square foot speculative building, that could be manufacturing, it could be warehousing, it could be distribution. And then another, Matt, what's the other square footage of the, the second spec building? Can you, can you release Matt Garber to speak? Is he available? So we're.
He'll be joining in just a moment.
The answer is around a hundred and seventy thousand, so three hundred and thirty and a hundred and seventy are the two speculative buildings that were building just north of this. And again, they could be, it could be manufacturing, it really comes down to which user.
Is there any retail, any plans for retail?
No, we're strictly industrial developers.
If I may, Commissioner Yost, um, this P U D does encompass land that does, I would say, envision retail or commercially supportive land uses as well to the, to the east and to the north of the site, which is not owned by the applicant hand Becknell, but zoning is, is much more broader and encompassing of other land uses.
Please, we also have Mike DeGrant, an applicant for that developer, available to answer questions as well, if Tricia can bring him over.
Yeah, Mike, Mike can speak a little more eloquently about the other land uses in the park.
Do you have me online?
Yep, we got you there.
Yes, great, thank you. So, good evening commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. I am Mike DeGrant, Vice President of Shep Communities, a master developer for DIA Tech Center and Nexus North. And the DIA Tech Center, to answer your question on retail uses, we do own ground that is in, within filing two and filing three of the P U D along Tower Road that is designated retail and commercial use, so retail space, hotel use, right there between Eighty-First and Eighty-Third Avenue.
Okay. Any further questions for the applicant?
Thank you, that answers my question.
Thank you all for, for jumping on, Paul and Mike.
Sure.
Would not like to turn it over to comments from the, the public. Tricia, did anyone register to, to ask a question today?
No.
Okay. We will not have any comments, we will close the public comment portion of it, were there any written comments received?
There were no written comments received.
We will now close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Further comments? Is there a motion from the commissioners on the case?
Yes, I'd like to make a move, a motion. I move the Planning Commission and a finding that the requested P U D Zone Document Amendment for the property located at south of East Eighty-Fourth Avenue, west of Tower Road, north of East Eighty-First Avenue, and east of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Nation Wildlife Refuge, contained in P U D eight ninety-six, dash eleven, dash twelve, dash sixteen, dash seventeen, dash twenty-one, meets the criteria of the Land Development Code, and based upon such findings, recommend that City Council approve the P U D Zone Document Amendment.
Is there a second?
I second.
And then Popio, I'm sorry to interrupt, you did have Mr. Douglas raised his hand. I think we went over that in the beginning, but I just want to acknowledge his hand is raised.
So if we've already closed the public comment, we have the discretion of opening it again? Or can we move on?
Well, at, at this time, you've had a motion, you've not had a second, if you want to vote to reopen the hearing, you can do that. We don't have a second yet, so you, you could probably have a quick motion to do that at this time.
I move that we reopen the public hearing.
Second, yeah. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Call for a vote to reopen the, the public hearing?
I apologize. Commissioner Yost?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingram?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamak?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Amador?
Yes.
And Chairman Popio?
Yes. Okay, we will now open the, the motion has passed to reopen the public comment, we will go open that, is there would you please allow the the person in?
Mr. Douglas, you've been unmuted.
Okay, thank you, thank you. This is, uh, Commissioner Steve Douglas is an alternate, I had a question about, um, just, uh, on the docket today, is this will this be moved over to City Council next week, or would it be in December?
I'll take that.
Go ahead, Ms. Axmecker.
This case will be heard at City Council tonight, it was advertised and posted for the meeting this evening.
Okay. This is to, uh, Mr. Rogers. Yep, no, this property wasn't the one that was discussed last week's council meeting, was it?
I'd just like to, to remind the chair that the questions are supposed to be directed to the chair, and then the chair has the discretion to, to consult others on that.
All right, sorry. Mr. Douglas, if you could please, yeah, if you can go through your list of questions, then let's see what you have, and then I can go from there.
Okay, sure, just question is, the building, is it going to be A I, artificial intelligence, as far as like robots? I see there's seven planned D I technology. Will any of them come to fruition as far as office building being and, and tech, because I, I'm kind of confused, because I see tech, can I see a list of how many different pieces that would be, would tie to, uh, uh, technology? Let's see. And that, and that's it, that's, that's what I wanted to ask.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Douglas, yeah, like I think from the, we heard from the applicant is that there's probably going to be a series of technologies within the facility that's going to facilitate, you know, their distribution center, so yeah, you, you would probably say the use of high technologies is going to be, you know, in use with the facility. Mr. Rogers, I know you had kind of deemed the, the, the land that is adjacent to it that might have some other uses, if you wanted to address that question.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, once again, as, as stated, the D I T C P U D is encompassing of other land uses that are either retail in nature, commercially supportive in nature, such as your hospitality uses. Uh, and it obviously offers a, a, a much broader range of other office technological uses as well. As it relates to the implementation of those, I would actually direct that question back to the applicant on hand, Mike DeGrant, uh, which I do believe he had also spoken to what is also contemplated in the zoning as well.
Yeah, I think, I think that question was answered, you know, Mr. Rogers and Mr. Douglas, so I, I think we can move on from there. Any further people registered to speak, Ms. Tricia? Anybody else up there? Okay. We will now close the, the public comment portion of the meeting and turn it over to the commissioners, is there a motion for the case?
We already have a motion, I think, we're looking for a second.
A second.
The, that motion was withdrawn in favor of the last motion to reopen the hearing, so there, a new motion will have to be made, thank you.
You could redo that.
Matthew, Matthew, okay. Uh, I move that the Planning Commission and a finding that the requested P U D Zone Document Amendment for the property located south of East Eighty-Fourth Avenue, west of Tower Road, north of East Eighty-First Avenue, and east of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Nation Wildlife Refuge, contained in P U D eight ninety-six, dash eleven, dash twelve, dash sixteen, dash seventeen, dash twenty-one, meets the criteria of the Land Development Code, and based upon such findings, recommend that the City Council approve the P U D Zone Document Amendment.
Second?
I second.
Can we, Alexa, can you please call for a vote?
Commissioner Yost?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Ingram?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamak?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Amador?
Yes.
And Chairman Popio?
Yes. The motion has passed by a vote of five yeses, zero nos. Thank you for presenting the case, and thank you for the commissioners. Uh, thank you for presenting the case, and thank you for the commissioners. On that, there are no other cases tonight, appears, uh, so we'll move over to some miscellaneous business. Uh, any commission business that we need to discuss from the commissioners tonight? Matt, any, uh, any legal business that needs discussed tonight?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, uh, Steve, any staff business?
Just, um, echo his, uh, Thanksgiving, uh, wishes for you all since moving to Burton. Um, we do have some cases scheduled for December, so, uh, I believe next week on the first, um, we have four cases that night, so, um, we'll afford to seeing you all again, um, then.
Yeah, thanks for the. On staff business, I don't, maybe I missed it, but, um, do we have just one alternate now, or do we have more alternates, or was that announced for staff?
So, yeah, so, um, so you know, we, uh, Warren, uh, Warren retired, and then Karen, uh, also ended up moving out of the city, so, um, there was a, uh, uh, council promoted, um, our two alternates, Ingram and Yost, to regular positions. And then they also then appointed, uh, Commissioner Douglas to be the alternate, so we have one alternate position still available, so if you all know anyone, they're certainly welcome to apply, uh, for that second alternate position.
Thank you. Congratulations to Commissioner Ingram and Commissioner Yost on that promotion, so welcome full-time to the team. With, uh, no, nothing else to discuss, we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you all. Have a.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Yep, bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Right.